Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 12th, 2023 Bloomfield Hills City Commission meeting. Let's all please stand and recite our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The first matter we have is the consent agenda, which includes bills payable for August 2023, department reports, and the minutes of the regular meeting held August 8th, 2023. Do any of the commissioners have any questions or comments?
I have one question, I guess maybe for Sandra. I see that the Public Safety Department got a $72,000 grant, which is great, but do we do a budget amendment?
We haven't at this time, but we certainly could in the future.
You know.
Yeah. So the expense is in the budget, but the grant portion revenue.
Because otherwise, where does that revenue go? Back to the department, or?
No, it's just part of the fund balance. So we keep it separate. I keep track of it, what we're receiving as grants and the expense, but as far as the general fund, it's close to the fund balance.
So we do have, do we have it earmarked for anything?
I mean, it's for the public safety education.
Oh, it's going to go to education for the public safety.
But it was money we were going to be spending anyway. I guess, I guess the question is, you know, do we lower that department budget or not? Because we got 72. If we spend more in a department, we're always doing a budget amendment the one way, so I guess I just don't know, should we do it on the other direction? Or, or is maybe the chief going to say, no, I have use for that money?
As far as the books are concerned, you know, we mark it as a revenue. We don't necessarily lower the expense side or the department side. But in theory, I suppose that could be an option.
So Chief, are you planning on doing additional training? I think that's what Commissioner McClure is getting at. Are we doing additional training that we didn't have earmarked for this year? Are we going to go against the training you already had planned for this year?
That is training that we had planned this year. It's for budget. It's budget as far as our wages and benefits are budget. It's to help offset the cost of the academy and offsets most of the costs of the employee while they're in the academy. And we have three in the academy currently, and I propose that we'll probably get two more starting in January.
Oh, so this is for academy training, new police officers? It's not, it's not enhanced training or anything? It's new officer training?
That grant specifically covers the cost of people in.
Is this, is this unique to Bloomfield Hills, or are all the cities?
It's a state of Michigan grant, any municipality or township.
Can apply, great. I just threw it out there. It's like, so in essence, we've done, we've given the department $75,000 more than they would have because something they knew they were going to be paying for, now they don't have to pay for. So I guess it's just, I'm not sure which way I feel about it, but I just throw it out there.
It's going to net out, right? And it's a matter of, do we include that in the next budget?
Well, if we get the money, money in now, this year as revenue, right? It's going to come in as revenue this year, so we'll have $75,000 more in revenue than we anticipated.
But we'll still have the expense because we paid for the.
Right, right.
In, in the past, they had paid the academy directly, and we were in place with the cost of the academy for the academy portion, which is plus $600 per person. Now they just, we have to pay the academy the fees for the tuition and uniforms, all those expenses that were being paid directly to the academy, and the state is just paying the city.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments or questions on the consent agenda? We have a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. How seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried. The next item is recognition of citizens in the audience. This is the time, if anyone in the audience has a question or a comment to make, whether it's on an agenda item or not, now is the time to raise your questions. Please raise your hand and wait to be recognized, then stand and state your name and your address. And please limit your comments to three minutes. Does anyone, yes?
Please stand. I'm Jennifer Marker-Afman. My address is 899 The Diamond Drive in Rochester Hills. I'm the Chief Program Director for the Autism Society of Greater Detroit, and I want to introduce our organization to the Bloomfield Hills City Commission. About eight years ago, a small handful of chapters in the National Organization of the Autism Society of America closed their doors. And the National Organization went through a restructuring, this moving toward a model with a single autism society affiliate in each state, and we are the new autism society affiliate for the state of Michigan. We are a newly volunteer, live 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and currently serve Oakland, McComb, Wayne, St. Clair, and Washington County. With the support of our parent organization, the plan is to cover the entire state in the next five to eight years. Our main purpose is to be the connection between all of the community service organizations, state services, and those people in our communities that are affected by the autism spectrum disorder. We offer a 24/7 information and referral line and resources on our website. And as we help the community, we find and connect things, we sometimes identify gaps that are needed in services. In this case, we will write grants, and with our community partners, we will begin to support those efforts. This year, the Autism Society of America became a proud partner of the Aging and Disability Vaccination Collaborative, a nationwide initiative to increase access and uptake of COVID, flu, and other routine vaccinations, with a focus on aging and disability communities, including our autism population. The Autism Society of Greater Detroit joins ASA in this effort by addressing the needs in our own communities by offering accessible free vaccine clinics and then related training and education to other services in our communities. We are seeking healthcare and community partners who are interested in increasing vaccination rates and improving the vaccine experience. Partners will receive training and support from the Autism Society. And the Autism Society's accessible vaccine clinics create inclusive vaccination environments by reducing the barriers to vaccine uptake in the autistic population, providing tips on communicating with autism, disabled, and aging populations, sharing effective strategies to reduce pain and anxieties for those families during a vaccination visit, disseminating support such as visual schedules, communication boards, and social stories during the appointments, providing practical tips to improve confidence, and distributing free accessible vaccine kits. These accessible clinics are funded by a grant from USA Aging and the Department of Health and Human Services, and are provided, again, free of charge. Part of the grant project is also to forge meaningful ongoing partnerships which support the illumination and project of the goal during the grant period and beyond. For more information, you can please visit our website, www.autismssocietyofgreaterdetroit.org.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? Okay. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the commission would consider the request of the property owner at 39515 Woodward for approval to rezone it from O1 office to C1 commercial. And this one was tabled at the Planning Commission meeting earlier today at the request of the applicant, so we're not going to be hearing it tonight. So I'll move right on to item number five, which is the commission will consider a revised early voting plan as presented by Assistant City Manager and City Clerk Amy Burton.
Thank you. I was here last night talking to you about the early voting plan and my excitement about having a smaller election to try to kick it off and see what nine days of early voting would be like in Bloomfield Hills. And then on August 30th, I went to a state meeting and learned that the technology that we use on Election Day in the precinct was not going to be available and ready for the nine days of early voting. So once that, once I learned that new information, I believe it's absolutely necessary that I bring it to the commission with my recommendation that I do not feel comfortable in having nine days of early voting for a local election that we're not required to. So the technology will be available for the state and federal elections next year, and I will participate, and I will be using it as required, but I do not feel that, given the information I have and the technology and the processes that are in place for this election November, that it would be the best choice for Bloomfield Hills to participate in early voting.
So you're saying nobody is, or we've just said we're not going to? If, if some, one of our residents wanted to participate in early, early voting, where would they have to go?
They can, they would not be able to participate in early voting this November when it is not required. They will be able to participate when it's required for a state and federal election in 2024.
They can still do absentee ballot.
Okay, so they can do absentee?
Absolutely. And they can still come on Election Day.
Okay, so it's not required to have the nine days this voting period?
Correct.
But it will be next year?
It is only required for state and federal elections. It is never required for a local election. My recommendation, you might remember last month, was that I thought it would be a great opportunity for the city to kick off the nine days and see what it was going to be like when we have a lower value election. But I do not feel like the trade-off is there, given that it is not going to be the same model as we use on Election Day for those nine days of early voting. I don't see the benefit.
Do you, just shortly, what's the model? What's?
It is, so typically, I guess the best way for me to explain it is on Election Day, you go into the precinct, and there's a laptop computer, and you would scan your driver's license, and then you would be issued a ballot. That technology is not available for nine days of early voting for this November, so it would be going back to a paper tracking system, manual tracking system.
Okay, so by doing it next year, you're going to be able to do that where they scan the driver's license?
So that's a state of Michigan function, and the state on August 30th let us know that they do not have a program set up to the standard that's required for early voting. So they have told us that it will be available for next year, 2024, but it is, we are in the position of we have to run the state of Michigan.
And it was optional for November?
Right, we were just going to do it, right?
We could opt to do it, we didn't have to. We just were going to do it as a practice, and now she's saying it's not. So the only change that you made, Amy, is the Bloomfield Hills plan, the city of Bloomfield Hills shall provide early voting for all statewide or federal elections?
Correct.
Is that the only change to the plan that we approved? So.
Is this going to be available, the early voting for like the primaries in?
Yes.
Okay, in February, March?
Yes. And then those election dates are decided.
Legally, since it was something approved, Dirk, we just, I can make a motion to rescind?
You don't even need to, you can just make a motion to approve the revised plan.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the revised plan regarding early election voting.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion is carried. The next item is the commission will consider the Oakland County Equalization Contract for Assessing Services for 2023 through 2025. And I note that the materials indicate that the contract has been reviewed and approved by our city attorney from a legal perspective. So, and also, I think, Sandra, you feel comfortable that we can comply with the requirements of Section 9 of the country?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we already follow those items in Section 9.
Thank you. May I just a quick question?
Sure.
Was the 4% increase per year, was that typical of what you would have expected?
Yes.
Okay.
It has been 3% in the past. Oh, but yeah.
And our current budget covers the 4%. I think we actually increased it by 5% or four and a half.
Okay.
Okay. Any other, any other questions or comments? Ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Oakland County Equalization Contract for Assessing Services for 2023, 2024.
Second, Matt?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried. Okay. The next item was an add-on. We'll consider the appointment of Catherine Ogier to serve on the Planning Commission for a term through December 2024, and the appointment of William Hossler to serve as the Planning Commission representative on the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term through December of 2023. And this was to replace Frank McDonald, who resigned recently from the Planning Commission, and he was also the Planning Commission's representative on the zoning board. So, and Catherine's application is here.
So would she be on the zoning board as well? Or did they select someone else from the Planning Commission to take his place on the zoning board?
Well, William Hossler's on, he's on the.
Oh, I didn't hear.
He'll do both. I think William.
He's the one that's going to do both.
No, William, Bill, Will Hossler is going to be the Planning Commission's representative on the zoning board.
Okay.
Katie is, is going to fill in as the representative on the Planning Commission because we're one down now, Frank and Katie.
Thank you.
Anybody have any question?
I'll just speak up. I do know Catherine or Katie as, and I've known her probably 10-plus years. She, she is a, an advocate of the city. She is an advocate of maintaining the beauty of the city. She was her own general contractor building her home. I think Brian could tell you that, right? So she has a lot of knowledge. She is an attorney as well, and I think she'd be an excellent addition to the Planning Commission and to the city. So I would, I would encourage that.
Motion?
I would move to approve the appointment of Catherine Ogier. Is that the right way to?
Ogier.
Ogier.
She's French.
To serve on the Planning Commission for the term through December 2024, and then also the appointment of Will Hossler to serve as the Planning Commission representative on the ZBA through December 2023.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion's carried. All right. City manager comments?
We have, in this budget, $50,000 set aside or approved by the City Commission for trees. So the residential tree planting program would typically start now, we would send a letter out and, and, you know, let us, let them know what type of trees that we have and for the, the residents. And so before starting that program, I just wanted to make sure that the commission's okay with moving forward with this. And the last two programs, we use the same contractor. He would hold the pricing this year, but it's, he's done a great job in planting these trees and, and dealing with any of our issues that we've had.
Can you remind me who does the work?
Christmas, James Christmas Trees, Tree Company, or landscaping or something. And so I'd like to use the same contractor if possible, and.
No, I think the city, we need to, I mean, we already approved it in the budget, but it makes sense to keep doing it because, again, as we've talked about, residents are not planting deciduous trees themselves. They're planting evergreens for screening and then ornamentals like dogwoods or something. And to really maintain the tree canopy, we really have to keep planting. And I was going to ask, there were a couple areas that had come up before. One, on Lone Pine, Cranbrook Dining Hall, you know, there's like a strip of lawn about five or six feet.
Across from the brick wall we just repaired.
Yeah.
At Lone Pine Court?
Well, yes, across, so there's where the dining hall is, and they have a parking lot. There were bushes there, they've taken out the bushes because they had died, whether we or asked them to plant maybe some trees there. And then I, I know the city owns that other lot, and we tried planting some trees there, and it didn't work, but I know we had planted them staggered. Does it make sense just to, to line the street with a couple, to try them, maybe a different variety? I don't know why those didn't take.
Well, the, I had a little pushback by the residents that maintained the grass there, and they're kind of upset because they, they hired a company and they had to, you know, drive around the trees, I suppose, and it's not, I don't think it's irrigated it either. So that was two problems that we had. So I never went back, and a couple of them died, and then we ended up removing them and just to.
But maybe locusts are, you know, the ones that cities plant that don't need irrigation as much, you know? Just something to think about, but I think certainly.
Sure, I can.
Because even on Lone Pine, boy, you look, some of the oak trees, there's a couple that have started to die off, and we just keep losing things from disease and storms. And, you know, unless we change our woodland ordinance to keep encouraging people to plant deciduous, but almost no one does.
Yeah, nobody does.
They're just not doing it anymore.
To Commissioner McClure's point, what kind of species are we planting? Is it just all maple? Or are we doing some oaks and some?
Well, what we do every year is we try to see what's available. So sometimes there's elms, lindens, oaks, maple, and I'll find that out here real soon, but I just wanted to bring this up.
It'd be nice if we could get a few oaks planted in addition to.
Although those are temperamental, those are the hardest ones to take.
The oak.
Best we've had luck with was, is actually elms, lindens, and maples have been the best.
I mean, oaks are good if the resident will take care, you know, water them and stuff. They take a little bit more.
The ones I think that have been planted in our subdivision, I've noticed over the couple of years ago, they're doing really well now. I mean, they're really getting big. I can tell because they're in the right-of-way and they've got the.
The contractor, as a matter of fact, I think we replaced maybe a dozen this past year that didn't make it, and he came out and got it done.
Okay. I mean, if you think the ones in the median, we started that in 2011, and how big some of those are in the median now.
Yeah.
And that was a huge variety of trees, like birch trees. You know, we never knew those would actually work, but they don't last as long either. So, anyway, I just, if, whatever we offer to the residents to continue planting in, in the right-of-way area in front of their homes, but maybe there were a couple other places on Lone Pine, either across from the dining hall.
Okay.
Do the residents have a say in the type of tree, or is it just whatever?
Yeah, no, they do. We, what we do is we, we send out a letter, and it tells them what's available, either one or two or three species. And if we have more than one type of maple, specific kind of maples or specific kind, specific kind of lindens, then we'll let them know. But I kind of trust the, the installer to find healthy stocks of trees that will, that are going to survive. I, I didn't want to box them into a certain kind of tree, and then we're not getting healthy trees here.
Oh.
Because I was, we're concerned about that. So it seems that worked, but I can let you know what, what's.
Well, let's say, keep going.
And we would do that in October, but, and we would send a letter out. I was just actually waiting to talk to you today. So we'd send a letter out in the next couple, few days or by next week.
We should probably tell the people, I only say that because when we had ours planted, it's doing really well, but he was very good at telling us, make sure you take those stakes out after a year, because otherwise you're keeping the tree down. And I've noticed as I walk our neighborhood, there's other people that don't take the stakes out. So they should probably instruct them.
Yeah. I'm glad you told me that. We'll go around and take.
Yeah, because I know there was one on my street that was planted years ago, and the ring was never taken off, and the bark ultimately grew over the ring.
Oh.
You know, it found a way.
Yeah, we'll do that. We'll go around it, and we'll take those out.
So after a year, that has to, and then, I don't know if this is true or not, I'm not a tree expert, but my guy who does my lawn said, you know, they put that mulch up, the big mulch pile, and he said, if you keep that, if you keep that high, like some people are doing, all the roots will start to grow up as opposed to grow down. So just, you know, we're paying to plant them, let's make sure we educate the people on how to take care of them.
Yeah, you're supposed to let the, when the tree is planted, the, you know, the wings kind of be a little exposed of the roots coming out from the trunk.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. So, but I think, you know, once you see them in, you know, 10, I don't know, 15 years from now, they're going to look really, really pretty all over in the city. And I agree with Commissioner McClure. I mean, these people that are putting in these, if I see one more, arborvitae, you like them. But it's just like, they get, they just, they, they, they are great, and they're big and for now, but in 10 years, I was.
Not all of them.
Yeah, they start to look really.
Not all of them.
And I think one thing people, because two of us always sit on the Planning Commission as we're talking to people, you know, asking them to do screening landscaping, maybe there should be some comments about, you know, not just doing all those evergreen to mix, mix in some deciduous.
You've always brought that up at the Planning Commission when I was on it, and I noticed there was no one on the zoning commission that ever would introduce, and I brought that up, and they all were like, oh, yeah, you know, and I.
Yeah. Because again, people, they're, they're taking the trees down and, you know, and then they submit a plan, and they do their perimeter in evergreens, in some cases, hundreds of thousands of dollars of evergreens. And then they put ornamentals around the house, and they're not planting.
It's sad.
Part of the problem is us, though, because sometimes when things go to the Planning Commission, and they have to have a landscape plan, we advise them that screening means you can't see it.
But see, that's what I'm saying, we need to change our language a little bit, that.
That, I would agree with you because, you know, the fault is ours, because, because we are telling people. They ask us, what does screening mean? That means you can't see it all year round. That means you can't see that fence all year round.
And I think that's what we need to.
So there may be some adjustment to that? I don't.
Well, you can still have the wall of arborvitae, but then have a mix of.
A mix.
Things in front of it, or, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't, I still don't want the wall, but I'm, you can still.
Sure.
Be screening it and not have a straight wall.
Yeah, one oak tree for every, for every six arborvitae, right? White oak.
A little bit, but that would be better, yeah.
But they don't, you know, the thing about these trees is they don't screen, they grow up high, and then they're way above.
And they take a long time to grow.
You want to screen down below, you know? So you have to have some evergreens.
Yeah, both, right?
Some arborvitae.
And the only other thing I was, I was going to mention to the commission is that we're having some challenges in Trowbridge with water and the new chip seal.
Oh, no.
And so I know that Commissioner Baxter's seen us in there, and, and, you know, so there's a couple of things we're trying to do. We're trying to understand how we can mitigate some of this water, but not spend more money, more of the city's money. And so we've come up with some solutions, and we can always hire this contract, you know, our contractors that we use, but we're trying to use our DPW personnel and equipment they have, to try to do some reditching, and bringing this contractor in that did the chip seal program, and try to get some of these things on as part of the maintenance agreement or part of the warranty, I suppose, to try to fix some of these failed spots. So what we're trying to do is, if you, if you do hear some complaints, we're trying to get everybody off to a good start. And we'll think about ways in the future how to maintain this, and I know there's going to be a third chip seal a couple, couple of years down, but our objective from the administration standpoint is to get everybody off to a good start and try to solve a lot of these little issues.
Coating it doesn't help?
Well, coating it, so we're going to.
Because someone told me that some municipalities use a coating material. And, I mean, does that help it?
I'm not sure what, what you mean by coat. So there's, do you mean putting a brine solution on it to bring the dust down? Or you, or you mean a?
There was something that was, that holds the aggregate more.
Yeah, that'd be another coat of the chip seal product, not the, not the stone itself, but the, you know, the, the rubber tarish material. The most, yeah, the most hard.
Is that what's coming apart, Dave?
You know what's happening is some of the water is getting underneath it, and it's like a rubber mat on the, what it is, it's kind of like a rubber mat on the road.
Oh, no.
And so this rubber mat's not real thick. It works great when the rubber mat's flat, because the rubber mat has nowhere to go, it's got the compacted road, and so it works great until the water gets underneath it. And so some, you know, there is some topography challenges within Trowbridge, so the water, instead of running off the side of the road, sometimes it bounces off the edge and, and can, you know, erode edges, and then some water can get underneath. So we're trying to do some ditching and some techniques called riprap, that he's putting these rocks in to redirect water. The problem is, is that, and Leah's here to talk about it, but I work with Leah, and we talked to some contractors. Uh, the problem is, is that, and, and Leah's here, uh, to talk about it, but I, I work with Leah and, and we talked to some contractors. The problem is, you know, they, it was about twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars in extra cost for them to come out and do all this stuff. So we're, we're using our DPW and the equipment that they have and it's, it seems to be working. I, I think Leah's, uh, satisfied with what they're doing so far. And then our plan is, once they do some of this ditching and everything, have this contractor come back and spray over top of all that too, to kinda stabilize it. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's got me, it had me worried a little bit, but, uh, we're, we're trying to do our best.
Is it an issue because they didn't re-drain and re, you know, do all the storm systems before they did this? Is that part of the issue?
Well, I think the part of the issue is just, uh, the challenges with drainage. Even though we've uncovered some of the storm drains, what's happening is, uh, the loose gravel on the road fills them up. And we pull the gravel out, because it clogs them. And then there's some spots where we need some, we really need some extra. Additional storm drains and we're gonna install them to, to grab the water that's maybe shooting off to the side and going right around the, the current. Uh, storm drain. So, um, of course, you know, we've had a couple of residents identify some other things. So what we're trying to do is I'd, uh, try to fix the big things first and then continually, I suspect that we'll continually always try to work on it to make it right. Every year, uh, uh, probably, but, uh, I just want the commission to know that we're, we're working hard to try to resolve the current issues.
And do you think that, that, that rain event that caused that was extraordinary?
Really hard.
Really a lot of rain that came down in a short period of time.
I don't know if you, uh, if you had any comment, uh, but, um, I think we're, we're on the right track. We're, we're trying to not spend a bunch of money doing it, but at the same time, we gotta fix it. We have to fix some of these things.
Yeah, I think it needs to be done right, even if the city has to, I mean, to be honest, it's. I mean, it was the product that the residents came to us with. It wasn't a product that we were saying. We're suggesting, it was the product that they suggested, but, you know, they've gotten assessed. You know, I think.
That's how we feel.
We, we need to make this right. I mean, maybe it's gonna fail in five years, but it shouldn't be failing the first year.
Right, there are, yeah.
Or is it failing because it's so young and new and the gravel is not.
Maybe it'll settle.
I really think that the, the, so there's a few things that are going on. I think it's, uh, water, the real fail is the water getting underneath it. And some, some erosion. So that's, we're trying to deal with some parts of roads that have quite a bit of a decline. Uh, and try to shore up some of the shoulders. And then we're trying to add some additional structures. And, um, then we're trying to deal with, with a couple of problems that's, you know, some residents feel that they should, they have a little more standing water in front of their home than they should. We have an idea to fix a couple of those things. We're gonna do all that at once. And then I would suspect. Over the years, we'll probably always have, have some sort of maintenance in there. I, I, you know, I just think it's part of it. It's maybe a little more maintenance than the, uh, um, asphalt, but not, not expensive maintenance necessarily, just.
So should, we should bake it into the budget next year? Consider adding?
I don't know. We might, we might be able to capture it with, within our DPW budget. Because, um, DPW has done things that they're no longer, they no longer need to do in there. So we may be able to capture it within our budget. So it's, it might not affect the budget. I just think that it's, it's important for the commission to know. It may be something that we always have to pay attention to.
Are the people who installed it, are they helpful with giving suggestions? I mean, they've obviously installed this before on a dirt road. So do, are they been helpful?
Well, we have not, uh, Mr. Demek out there and he's gonna come back and do things for us. But he's, uh, it's my understanding, he's, he's challenged with it too, because I don't think that he has done this on roads. That have had such a, you know, such, uh, grade issues.
I met with him this morning again on site and, um, the road is working how it's intended and the water is getting off the road. It's along the edges where they were finding this erosion that the waters traveling down these hills pretty quickly.
I mean, that happens on Martel or what's the one, uh, Haverhill, you know, where the new split lot house is. I mean, I mean, there's, the water runs next to that asphalt and it was like a two-foot ditch at one point. I think people have, they've come and filled it in.
So he's used to doing these on county long roads that have ditches already. So he really hasn't experienced some of these items that we've been seeing in the Trowbridge. So yes, he's working with us and we're trying to come up with some solutions on helping this. But it is a different application than what he is used to doing.
That's all I have.
Okay, um, any other business to mention?
Everything went well with the Dream Cruise and.
Yeah, how did that go?
Yeah, went great. Uh, we, we, with, uh.
Dream Cruise went excellent. I was very pleased with, um, the entire event. I was a bit concerned because of some of our communities surrounding us, like Berkeley and, um, you know, they had some problems at community events. And community events seem to be problematic more today than they were twenty years ago or even ten years ago. But Dream Cruise and the entire region was, um, very well staffed and, um, very well pleased. And it went well. We didn't have any, um, major events, none in our city. It was one at Fifteen and Woodward in Birmingham. I think there was one at, um, south of that, that they had some problems. That overall was very good this year.
How was the crowd with?
It was large. It was maybe the largest, they say it was the largest suburb. We were backed up more here in our city than I've seen, um, in the years past.
Oh, really?
So, yeah, Friday, we were backed up north of Long Lake and I've never seen it on Friday. I have seen it on Saturday, but then around Friday. And Saturday, we were backed up again.
North of Long Lake, huh? With a nice weather probably.
The weather was perfect. Um, the weather was actually helpful to us. It wasn't as hot as, you know, like it's really hot. We had a lot of cars that sell out that caused problems. And, um.
Oh, yeah, they can.
Weather sometimes increases, um, irritability in people. And the weather was just beautiful. It was, you know, it wasn't too hot. It didn't rain. It was, it was very good, so. But there was a lot of events in the town. Um, the hotel was really busy. Some of our office buildings were really busy. There was a lot of private, um, parties and everything went good. There was no, no crowds at all. So I was very thankful with the total help.
Thank you for making it go well.
Yeah, yeah.
Penny, I know you and Alice have been doing a lot with Smart. With the bus stops, so they're gonna install the two.
So they put two signs up, uh, already and they put a sign on the, on the sign that says it's not operating yet. But they plan to put cement slabs and sidewalks leading to Long Lake soon. And they're also gonna put a bench there. And they, they're not, they, they, they have, uh, they're reviewing all the planning commission material that they'll have to go through. And, um, they're gonna get back to us and they'll go through the process like anybody else and it'll be, it'll be, it'll be reviewed.
That's, that's if they wanna put a structure on it.
Yeah, she, she said, didn't she say though that it probably wouldn't be until the spring because they were hiring a consultant?
Yes.
And they wanted to run it past the consultant first and because of the winter and everything, the winter weather, they thought they would be pursuing it in the spring. They were a little, they were asking about the fees and all of that, that, you know, the.
But it's just this, a black structure with glass, right? Pexiglass, right?
It's really simple.
Yeah.
It's really simple.
It is. But, but the maintenance, my concern is the maintenance. They, it's their obligation. And, you know, to keep it clean and to keep it sanitary and all of that. Because Dirk has advised us that it, it isn't something we should be doing for liability purposes even. So I think that, you know, when it goes through the planning commission process, hopefully they'll make conditions. Include conditions for maintenance requiring them.
So where's, I'm sorry, where's the one now?
So there, uh, there's, uh, just the sign, the, the stops, the, the bus stops will be right in front of the gas station. There's, will there be one there? That'll be northbound, uh, Woodward and southbound Woodward is just south of Long Lake.
Is that too close to Long Lake for a bus to pull up though? I thought it was gonna be down further.
It does seem, it does seem that way.
When people are getting in the right-hand lane to go into Updike, to take Updike.
Well, that's in front of the gas station.
Going northbound.
But on the southbound, it's right in front of the first building on the corner instead of the sec, we thought it would be the second building.
That's where it used to be and so.
They're gonna put it at the first building or the second?
That's where the sign is now. Is that, did they explain that why it's there?
No, I haven't talked to them about that at all yet, um.
It just seems awfully close to the corner for, especially if it's one of those big double buses.
Yeah, they're putting in a, right there at that corner, at that first building. They're putting in, uh, a, but, a bench for now.
Bench for now. Slab and there'll be, maybe they did that so they didn't have to put as much sidewalk to Long Lake.
Thought the same thing.
Closer to Long Lake.
I thought the same thing.
But you don't want Long Lake blocked.
No.
It, with a bus.
No, I don't think they, uh, yeah, I don't think they can do that.
So I guess the question is. Uh, it'll be interesting to me to see who actually uses it because they can't park anywhere. Unless they're gonna park behind the office building to take the bus. They can't park at the gas station.
It's a private office building, isn't it?
Yeah, they all are.
Those dead office buildings, private, they.
But unless they monitor.
Nobody would know.
They, they, they're gonna park at the office building and take the bus. Or, because where are they coming from to take the bus?
Or if they get off the bus.
Or they can get off the bus.
But there's, there's no connecting bus going east and west. So they're pretty much stuck right at Long Lake and Woodward when they get off the bus. Cause.
Another thing I did too is I, I contacted Representative Dunning Steele to help out with a safe crossing from MDOT. And, uh, she just left me a message, I think yesterday, that she, she wasn't very successful with MDOT helping out. So I need to find out what that really means.
Are they paying for it in other communities or?
Amy, I talked about that. We're not sure how we can identify that other than flowing, other, uh, other than identifying crosswalks that we think would be safe. And then flowing that community to find out who paid for it.
Yeah.
I mean, that's something we might have to do.
Up and down Woodward, they have the crosswalks that we asked for and the sidewalks through the medians. And the little signs that people press the button. They have them, Birmingham.
So the question I have is we've gotten different information throughout this whole thing. You know, we were told we wouldn't have to pay for any of these things. Now we're getting told, no, it may be our responsibility. So. You know, someone in writing has to tell us. I mean, at what point?
MDOT's, MDOT's, uh, response is, we'll strike the, uh, we'll strike Woodward and now it's safe. They have told us that it's safe.
The crosswalk.
Yes.
And they said anything else other than that, they would only do if they already had scheduled work to be done at our connect, at our city. And they didn't have anything scheduled in the near future for us. So it wouldn't be happening anytime soon.
So we'll have two bus stops, but people really can't cross. They can't, there's no light to button, button to push that it's safe to walk or anything.
It's, and that's position that they can cross now and, uh, whether there's a bus stop there or not. And they can cross when the light turns red.
But they're running through the landscape bed.
And, yep, and then they can stand and wait in the median until that's their answer. That's the truth.
There's a, there's a right turn on red there. Right, Chief, going eastbound? There's a right turn on red there. Do you know how many people run? Like, they, that's, isn't, I, just in general, I won't hold you to it. Isn't that the most dangerous intersection we have in the city?
Unlike Woodward has, um, a lot of accidents because it's a busy intersection. It's probably our busiest intersection. Hickory Grove, Lone Pine, Corden, those are all, you know, busy intersections. All have, um, a lot of accidents. I would have to run the data, but I would guess that would probably be the most problematic.
I mean, I just, I'm with you, Commissioner McClair. A bus stopping there when people are going southbound on Woodward at the cliff that they go and all of a sudden they're coming to a halt. Or I can see people trying to go around the bus to try to go and turn into, um, the Kingsley, you know, there too.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we're, we have been very concerned about, but our primary talking point is, is the safety of cross, of people using that bus. That would cross, have to cross Woodward. If someone's getting off a bus on southbound Woodward, it'd be logical that they would cross Woodward to go to northbound at some point.
Right, you can't, if they're coming to work.
Right.
Yeah.
Somewhere, then they're going to have to cross Woodward to go the other direction.
We understand that maybe even one side, but, uh, maybe the, uh, the crosswalk would be, um, south of Long Lake.
It seemed like we talked about it maybe being closer to Little Daddy's or something, that, where there's already a light.
The problem is that there's not a light on the other side.
No, it's only one side. It's on the northbound.
MDOT's response is that you have a light there. Across and it's, you can cross now.
Yeah, well, we'll see who ends up using it or not. I don't know.
It just seems like the bus stop itself should be further south than where they have the sign right now. It just seems too close to the corner.
You know, uh, so we have sent pictures to, um, to Smart of the, actually, Amy and I drove around and found six bus stops, I think. That previous bus stops, that there's remnants of the sign pad still there. So we'll send that again to, we still have those pictures. We'll send that picture again to Harmony Lloyd of, um, of Smart. To recommend that's where they should put that bus. I, I would agree, but who knows? Maybe they don't wanna put a sidewalk that far. They have agreed to put a sidewalk with the stop to Long Lake. That was, that was their small win.
But then where does the sidewalk go? It just goes to the.
Goes to Long Lake and to, to the bus stop, that's it. But that's better and, uh, that's better than nothing because, you know, if people are gonna cross Woodward, we wanna get.
Yeah.
Down to Woodward or down to Long Lake and then cross Woodward safely and back to the bus stop, like, I suppose.
And you'd have access to, you know, everything that's at Long Lake and Woodward and, and then down Long Lake even to, to those sto- sh- shops. And banks and things down there and to the restaurants on both sides of the street. So, I mean, it, it's a good start, I think, to see how, how much activity we get.
So are they going to, to your point you just made, are they gonna do this for a year and monitor and see how much it's used? And then add more? Or what is their plan?
They haven't really said.
I don't think their plan is, is, uh, I, I believe that their plan is to put stops in. Uh, uh, not with, uh, anecdotal data. They wanna, they want to, uh, put the stops in. And then have people use them. And then we would develop empirical data, but I, and that, that's for the commission to know. But, yeah, that, I, I think that they're not, um, they don't have any data that, to, to tell us or to understand who would stop there. Because there's not a stop there, if that makes sense.
Right, sure.
So, um, so I think they just wanna put the stop there, uh, because it's part of the whole system. And it gives people opportunity to use it.
Well, I think there'll be some other issues as it goes forward. I mean, the one place that years ago wanted it was Cedar Brook. So, but there's no sidewalk. There's no way to cross, you know.
There's a lot of issues with it, yes.
You know, I think it will, over time.
My concern is, I, I'm sorry, but no one's used to pedestrian cross lines.
Right.
At Long or, lo- I, it's gonna take a long time for people to notice those and be on alert. I'm really concerned about the.
Particularly since we're a fifty mile an hour.
Exactly.
I know, that's the issue. I mean, in Birmingham, you're down to forty.
All of that and then they didn't care.
Wow.
But you, so.
We said all of that.
You guys would know this, but it's a, it's a, it's those, the pedestrian slash lines and I'm a pedestrian and I wanna walk across. If I go on a green light that's Woodward, do cars have to stop?
Cars have to yield to pedestrians in the roadway if they can see and have opportunity to yield.
Even though you have.
Person is there in a green lane and that car strikes that person, the pedestrian has.
Pedestrians at fault.
Oh, the pedestrian's at fault. If it's a green light and they're in the crosswalk.
Somebody in the roadway because they're there, you still have to stop. Um, traditionally, we've had our pedestrian accidents further south by the hotel because they've crossed between the hotel and the restaurants. Little Daddy's or going over to.
Oh, sure.
Or when it was Fox and Hounds. Traditionally, we don't have a. Traditionally, we don't have a lot of pedestrian accidents there, but every two, three, four years, we do have, if you look back at history, a pedestrian accident, and normally, it's the crossing down there.
That's why I thought that was, that was why I thought that was the more logical place to put-
Moving north may just move that accident further north, um.
There's not the, there's not the lights there though.
Directions.
There has to be a light on both.
Yeah, there's no light, they'd have to put a light.
Well, they can't, but I thought at one point they wanted to add eight stops, and there weren't lights anywhere of the other places.
Yes, they, they-
Yeah.
Well-
There's a very small handful of people in, over the history of the last twenty years, that, you know, routinely would maybe use the bus, and sometimes they go to Long Lake and Woodward Copper Tops. Once in a while, like the golf course may have, you know, a worker, so, you know, a residence close by may have somebody that comes, um, from the north or south. But I don't anticipate that your ridership will be extremely-
Well, I know when they did a survey, and this was a long time ago, this, even, it was like even before my time, they said there were seven people that would use the stops. They, and they interviewed businesses, I mean, it was, you know, fifteen years ago, but they said there were like seven people that would use the bus in the city.
Yeah, we're, we're, we haven't been taking that tact at all, we, we've been just concerned, we, we've been taken the position that that we're, these stops are gonna happen, that we'll, we're long- at some point, if you wanna put shelters in, there's a process to go through. And, but, can we please make it safe going across Woodward? I mean, that's really what we, we cut it down.
Right, we're giving them a million dollars a year, so we should probably put in a couple stops.
The rest of it, we haven't, we're staying clear of all that.
Yeah.
Is there any beautification that is required around those stops, or, is there any beautification that can be done to, that we can ask the gas station to do? It just seems so-
I think we want them to disappear.
Yeah, I think the glasses-
I don't think we wanna make them architecturally significant or anything.
The glass is not, 'cause you just look through, you don't even notice unless you're moving forward.
Like camouflage, then with foliage, I'm not saying, you know, like-
And another thing too, with, with the, the bus stops, and, and we have looked at some of them in the area, and they're, they are pretty, you know, they're not really, they're not real, real noticeable. But it's really important from a pu, public safety perspective to keep them very clear.
Right.
Sure.
Glass.
That's true.
These cars drive by, if someone's laying down in there, maybe they're hurt or something, they have to, they have to be able to always see in, in, in there.
So people don't do weird things, yeah.
Yeah, I, I've looked at a lot of them now, and they're, they're nice, really. I don't, I think the way that they have them set up with the, they actually have the seats coming out of the ground and poles, and there's two seats, so there's not like a bench for someone to-
Oh, that makes more sense.
To lay on, and, and, um-
They're pretty simple.
And they have the cellphone, or the, um, the, the, uh, photo cells on the pole outside, 'cause I guess they're heated from, uh, you know, solar energy, and there's a pole with the timing on it and that, and, and you look right through them. I think, I think they're fine, I think, you know, from a, from a, it's just my concern is that they keep them clean and neat and, and-
And safe.
And sanitary, and safe, and if they don't post things on them, or they don't add anything to them, advertising, or any kind of digital sign or anything, we would wanna make sure they couldn't do that.
Do we have the, do we have the authority over that?
We have some authority over it, but not, not absolute authority.
What do you mean, like, if they wanna put a digital sign there, they can?
Probably.
But they haven't done that.
But if it goes before the planning commission, and the planning commission stipulated as a condition of approval that they couldn't do that, wouldn't it hold up?
Not necessarily, because there's, there is a, a Bus Shelter Act that talks about certain kinds of advertising, and you have some control over that, but it doesn't say prohibited, so. So, so the answer is you have some ability to regulate that.
But if they start running through the landscape bed to cross, they're gonna have to cross somewhere. So that's-
We've thought about that, I've thought about, I've looked at the landscaping, and, I don't know, the commission may wanna consider moving some of that landscaping and, and, uh, you know, providing a, a, a way for people to cross safely and make sure that they can see.
Well, if they're putting the stripes, they're putting the stripes there, right?
On the road.
Yeah.
On the road.
Not in the-
I mean, I know you've all seen those where they have the lights that flash when people cross, too, I mean, you can go to great extents.
What stripes are they putting, for where the bus is pulling over, or to cross the street?
Just cross the street. On the ground.
Crosswalk.
Crosswalk.
Yes, but they're gonna do, but isn't the landscape bed in the way or not? So they're gonna do a stripe to the landscape bed, there'll be a landscape bed with shrubs, and in the wintertime, that, you, no one's gonna be able to cross that.
Right.
We would, that's what he's suggesting.
We wanted them to put a sidewalk.
Well, I wanted, I want them to put a sidewalk through there.
ADA.
And, yeah, ADA compliant with the ramps. And all that, there's an expense to that, and, uh, we're already, already paying for this, for the rest of this, the, uh, transportation stuff, but, uh, but, you know, uh, Woodward is, is a state road, it's-
But they should be paying for that.
Yeah.
To put the crosswalk in, I would argue.
They, they should be, and I, we have argued it to, to no avail, and, uh, like I said, I tried to, uh, enlist the help from-
I think we need to talk to different people.
Yeah.
Maybe Danny Steele could help us, or Donnie Steele.
She tried, she said she did, they weren't, they weren't helpful to her either, I guess.
We need to talk to someone else.
Do you know anyone, Sarah?
I don't know, let me think about it.
Okay.
We need to-
It would be nice, I mean, I, I, I would, i- in my opinion, if there's gonna be bus stops there and people are gonna cross, we should make it safe for them.
It should be safe.
They should be safe.
What's the point in putting stripes in, so they can run in-
Right.
Through the landscaping?
And so if we have to remove that landscaping, and make sure there's a safe walkway through there, I think it's important.
It's gotta look nice to-
I mean, it's probably, I'm just guessing, like a ten thousand dollar fix to put a la, you know, to put a sidewalk in there. But I, but it just kinda concerns me that we're, you know, our village is generating a million dollars a year for Smart, and they won't pay for any of this.
Well, MDOT won't pay for it either. They've said we could put it in ourselves, you know.
It's crazy, wow.
Yeah, I mean-
Again, I don't know that we're talking to them.
I just, what about those, um, I'm sorry to go back to this, Dirk, on, so, we were coming down Maple, um, outside of Birmingham, and they have a crosswalk, and they have the islands now, you know, so they had, like-
Yeah, everywhere in the middle of the street.
But, but they have, um, so there's no light up above, they have the white crosswalk to walk across, and they had these, like, flashing yellow or whatever lights, and, I mean, this girl with her dog just thought traffic was supposed to stop. I mean, you know what I'm saying? Like, so, you know those flashy, like, you know what I'm talking about? Like pedestrian crosswalk things? Again, a driver should stop on that, or is it the pedestrian?
Well, driver, the, the driver. Yeah.
Um, they're not required to stop, those lights are just a warning for vehicles to notify them that pedestrians are in the crossing, so.
But, but my point being is, I don't think pedestrians know that, I think they hit that little button, and they think-
I think there's-
They can just go, and it's not, they still have to-
That's what I'm worried about, on, on, if there's nothing there, they see a crosswalk, they're gonna go, I have the right of way.
Well, but, but how else do we get them across the street to the other bus stop?
I know.
Well, that's why Birmingham's looking at doing a road diet and shrinking their lanes, 'cause they've had people hit and killed.
Yeah, exactly.
So, it's gonna, that's what, if, if they're, and maybe no one's gonna use these stops for all we know, I don't know. But I think there will be this dashing across.
I do too.
And, um, it could be a problem, so-
A little bridge.
There's an expense.
Not a bridge.
Yeah, not a bridge, I don't think so. But I gotta believe the landscaping, like you said, in the middle there-
Yeah.
Is gonna be key, right?
Yeah, the landscaping, if people are actually running across, we're gonna have to take the landscaping out.
Well, there's, right there where I think the, the crosswalk would, would happen, uh, where it would be, there's a, there's a pole there, there's some infrastructure there that, I think right behind that, you just clear a path, you can still keep the rest of the landscaping, and then you'd have-
Right, then not mostly, eighty percent of the landscaping can stay, you just need to put a five-foot-
The MDOT representative said they'll have to stop, that there isn't enough time to run across, that the timing of the light and everything, they'll have to stop in the middle in any event, and wait for the light to change on the other side.
Oh, wow.
They made a point of saying that.
But they're not putting a walk, green walk person on there anyway.
No.
Yeah, it's gonna be a problem, so-
That's crazy.
A year from now, or two years from now, people are gonna be sitting here, okay, now we have to do this, and then a year later, someone's saying, now we're gonna have to do that, it, this, that's the way it's gonna be.
That's unfortunate.
Okay.
Any, um, updates on the noise ordinance, ordinance issue, all the complaining or?
Well, I mean, as far as, as far as our complaints, or as far as, uh, legislation?
Legislation, is there any?
I spoke to Danny Steele, but I also spoke to a federal group of legislators last month, and Danny Steele's promised that she has her legal team working on it, and they're drafting some legislation that she is gonna sponsor.
Great.
So we have not seen that legislation yet, but she's aware of the problem, and she's been very receptive. She takes my phone calls, and she's actually turned the over to, I have a contact on her legal team now, who is supposed to be-
We should get a, a Democratic co-sponsor with her, I mean, like, if Royal Oak or Birmingham or somebody else should get, who's ever representing-
There is the Democrat from Royal Oak.
Yeah.
No, from Berkeley, excuse me, Moss.
Oh, yeah.
He is, um, working with her on it.
Yeah, 'cause it would be better if it-
Yeah.
Given the, the reality of the state legislature right now, it would have a much better shot if-
Good point.
If it wasn't just sponsored by a Republican.
I think there's still some uphill battles, but she has promised that she will, and she's been very receptive to doing that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Well, I guess we'll adjourn then. Okay.